I'm showing this Pat Riley in his work position, our regular scheduled council meeting was 6:30. At this time, we'll start with Ben Tony.
Thanks Mayor, good to be there buddy. You'll see the three items on the new business agenda tonight that I have been involved in. The first is CSX land license agreement. The resolution that authorizes the mayor to enter into this requires an annual encroachment fee of $1,200 and I recommend that to the council tonight. If you have any questions about, I know it's been talked about here, but it's, we're in the final stages. CSX has put their finishing touches on it. They require us to sign it and send it back to them before they'll sign it. So that's ready to be done. And so I recommend that. The second item is the next to the last item is a resolution. And I'll try to explain this to you as best I can. There was a case in Jefferson County involving the city of Mountain Brook where the trial court judge ruled against Mountain Brook and held that cities are responsible for flooding on private property in situations where they had easements. That's not currently the law in Alabama. And so they're appealing that decision. What they have done is they asked other cities around the state and they contacted me to get in touch with our Shelby County cities to join them as a, what they, it's called an amicus party. It's a friend of the coin. All we're doing is lending our name to the appeal in support of the appeal, which I do recommend that we do that simply because it's, we don't, no city wants to become a, it's essentially saying that cities are strictly liable whenever there's a flood, regardless of circumstances, if an easement flooded. That's never been the law in Alabama. And so it's important that the spring court understands that. The spring, in my experience, a few times I've done it and asked for this type of help in appeals. The spring court pays attention when other cities join in appeals like this. I know the Alabama League is certainly promoting that. And so we've asked ourselves Shelby County Council to join in this. So this resolution, all the, it's not going to cost the city anything. We're not writing the brief. We're just lending our name to the brief in support of this appeal. You know, my, my belief is that no city, including Calera, wants to become an insurer of last resort. No pun intended, it would open the floodgates to lawsuits and we certainly want to try to avoid that. So that, I put that on the agenda just because I think it's worth pursuing. Like I said, it's at no cost to the city. And hopefully we're going to get a resolved out of the spring court. The last item I worked with Bill and with Connie Holm was the vacation time buyback program for our board of members and that resolution, I looked at that resolution last week and I would certainly recommend that for the council's consideration as well. If you have any questions about any of those three items or anything else going on that you need my advice on.
We appreciate it. We'll get to those when we're in the meeting. Allison?
I'm just that the rain was finished, celebrated weekend on the library. Seems to be doing well, but we haven't had a substantial rain. So that Robert went up there and checked it. I haven't, but they're done. And voting is next Tuesday at the library.
Kelly?
I don't have anything, sir.
Chief?
One thing, as of last Friday, we are operating out of the new station line. So we've still got some work today. We're still moving furniture and files over. But we've got RPS scheduled that actually we're going to meet tomorrow and they're going to go through the whole station and start making a list of what, what they need to do to make it ready for them to move in. So once, once we do that and once we've completely vacated the station, then we'll enact the lease agreement that, that we adopted several months ago.
Chief?
Yeah, I've had some questions with a couple of the city council members about some of our overtime. And there's some facts that I think were left out during the budget discussions that I want to bring to everybody's attention. We had a budget adjustment of $128,000. Well, we get reimbursed by the state, by ADECA, for $127,800. So that kind of negates that budget adjustment. I think it sounded to some of you like that was a $128,000 increase overall. ADECA awards that money about three years, about three months behind when we actually do the work. So there's always a delay to get that reimbursement. We also get reimbursed, the allotment for this year for the drug task force was $13,000. I don't think we spent all of that because we had a period of time when we didn't have anyone assigned to that unit. So I'm not sure exactly how much of that $13,000 we spent. And also the Shelby County School Board, which I know this, there's something on the agenda about that tonight. This past year, they gave us $233,329 this past year. Part of that goes to cover overtime for our SROs. Now interestingly enough, over the past few weeks, Lieutenant Grant and I have met with the four principals at the schools and we have had some requests for some additional overtime at the schools that we haven't always done. We did some research and some of our neighboring school systems, Thompson and Pelham in particular, do cover some of these additional events that we've been asked to cover. So that's what I wanted to discuss with our principals about. I did not realize that this was going to be on the agenda tonight. So I called the county board and talked to the student services person about the, the new budget and they're, they're raising us $30,000. It'll be $263,329 for 2026, which is a $30,000 increase, which will be helpful. That's how much we get from, part of it is from the school board, part of it's from the county commission. It's my understanding that Dr. Brooks went up on all of the schools, not just us, on all of the departments that provide SROs. But that's, that'll help. So 263,000, because you guys, you all know, we have greatly increased our number of SROs in the five years I've been here and we've increased the amount of overtime we're spending. But anyway, I wanted you guys to understand that $127,800 of our overtime is reimbursed by the state for ADECA overtime. $13,000 is the allotment for Alea and then the $233,329 that we get for SROs. At least some of that could be considered going to overtime for SROs. So just so you're clear about that and everybody understands. In 2022, we got $84,000 from the school system and it had been $84,000 for many years. Kelly and I went over there. I don't know if it's 2021 or 2022, we met with Dr. Brooks. But after that, the number went up substantially. 2023, it was $134,000. 2024, it was $233 and it's been $233 for the last two years. And like I said, it's going up $30,000 this year. So that, that's a good thing. This past week, we had the 9/11 challenge for the fifth year. Appreciate everybody that came out and supported us and the police and the fire participants. We had a good turnout. We always do. And, and for the police, not that it really matters, but the admin team won and won by a lot. So nobody else was even close. We did have a ringer. It really wasn't fair. Thank, I want to thank Workout Anytime Clear though. This is the fifth year they've sponsored it. And as I think most of you know, the proceeds, both for police and fire is donated to the Alabama Special Olympics. So we appreciate the fire department partnering with us on that. We're, like you guys have probably seen too, when we do our torch run, we have the fire department participate too. So I like that, that we all do that together. We hosted a training class today. It was our fourth training class we've hosted this calendar year. And the big thing about that is it's, it's, gives us free slots in the class. Every time we host, we get two, three, four free slots and we don't have to pay the tuition. And we've got an adequate training room. We can hold up to 32 people in that training room. We had a highway interdiction class today, which, you know, I explained to them, you know, we got 21 kilos of cocaine ourselves. So we could probably add a story to the class. The last thing I want to talk about is I had a discussion with Anna and I got a call from Ann this past week and it was a concern about handicap parking. And I don't think a whole lot of departments enforce that very much. And I was a little confused about the law and how handicap parking on private property is handled in Alabama. And I think a lot of police officers don't understand the law. It's fairly straightforward. I got a copy of law today. I spoke with Judge Hester, who is in support of us trying to maybe start a, an awareness program and then start writing some tickets for this because I think it's gotten out of hand. I drove around a little bit today and looked and I think people are really taking advantage of it. But a couple of interesting things I learned from the law is we can write tickets on private property. A lot of police departments will tell you they can't. We absolutely can. It's very clear in the law. Also, 25% of all of the fines go to an Alabama fund for people with intellectual and physical disabilities, which I think is great. I think that's a good thing that Alabama does. We also can have the vehicle towed and that's something that we did not understand, but it's very straightforward and clear. And Ann, if you don't, is it okay if Ann comes and tells a little bit about what her situation was? I think she could explain it better than me. And I promised I would not touch that microphone. You've all seen what happened when I touched it. So James adjusted it. But Ann, if you would, tell, tell us about what your situation was that you and I spoke about.
So I went to Bertoloni's to eat the other night with my sister. And of course we parked in the parking spaces that are over there right in front of Anytime Business.
It's up on, where she parks up on Summer's Green.
So there's a loading zone to the right of my vehicle that was parked there. Well, there was somebody parked in it when I came out and I can't, you know, get in my car and I'm the one that drives the vehicle. So it's not very easy just to back out of the space and, you know, because there's not a chair in there. It's just empty until I get in there. So anyway, we went to all the businesses in that little strip mall, went to everyone that was open and asked everybody if they were parked in that parking space. And they all said no. We got to San Marcos, I mean not San Marcos, Los Mesis. They were packed. And the owner, that real nice guy, he went to every table and he asked every one of them if they owned the white Lexus that was parked out there. And they said no. So Kim got in the driver's seat, which is not a seat. She stood there and she luckily could back it out using the hand controls and got it out of that parking space so that I could get in it. Because it took us like 40 minutes going around trying to find these people that were parked there. And when I was getting in the van, I'd just locked in my van, the lady came out. She came from Los Mesis and she was carrying it to go back. And Kim went over to the car and she said, hey, did you know you were parked in a loading zone? And she said something flippant like, maybe I did, maybe I did. And Kim said, well, could you just try to be like a little more considerate of people that park there because they can't get in their vehicle if you're parked there? And she got, she just got ugly. She, I won't say the words that she said, but she basically said she had a gun in her car and she was not afraid to use it. So Kim got back in the car. I was like, let's get out of here. I got in front and the lady followed me out. Of course she saw my tag, which makes me a little nervous that she saw my tag. But it led to the call that I put into him the next day. I was like, how do I, how do I approach that? Because most people that park in a loading zone are there for a second and then they leave and know they shouldn't be parked in a loading zone. But it's not normally somebody that's there for 45 minutes eating dinner. So that's where we came up with, he looked at the law to decide what he could do. And basically he said, call me, call the police and we'll try to, we'll try to get them out of there.
And you said you had talked to other police departments that tell you that they can enforce this on private property?
Alabaster. Every time I go to Alabaster, at Shelby Baptist, outpatient surgery, there's somebody parked in every loading zone there. Called the police. They had to manually move my car out themselves and he was like, I can't write a ticket. I was like, you can't write a ticket? He's like, can't do it on private property.
Well, I'm going to share this at the chief's meeting that's this Wednesday with all the chiefs and the sheriff because you absolutely can write the ticket and as I showed you earlier, we can tow the car. Now this car parked in that loading zone had both handicap spots blocked for loading. So she blocked both. I went by that same spot today, three different times and there was a car parked there with no decal, no sticker. I think what we'll probably do is we're going to announce on social media that what we're going to do. We'll maybe give warnings for a little while, but we're going to start writing tickets for it.
That's a popular space for the fitness people that go there. Because normally I can walk in there and it's somebody in there all the time, but it wasn't that time. So.
Well, that's, that makes you even madder because they're going to work out.
And, and most of the time people are really nice. She was, she was the, she was different. So.
Well, I mean, I'm glad you brought that to our attention. I told Ann if she'd have called us that night, regardless of this, I told her we would have towed that car. And, and then we could have charged the lady with menacing or harassment if Ann had wanted to and didn't want to deal with that, which is her, that's her decision.
She was scary. And she still got my tag, which means she was harassed too. So. But thanks for looking into that.
No, we, I think we should do that. Thank you for bringing that to our attention and I'm sorry you had to deal with that. But anyway, we're going to start a, we're going to do a little public awareness and then I think we're going to start writing some tickets for that.
Seven? Two? Three? No, sir. James?
Just looking into it.
We're going to go to the council, the head chief, Mr. Gray.
Thank you. Can you hear me? We have mic problems. Now it's up, okay. Questions for Bill. I've had complaints from citizens regarding the water pressure in Shadow Creek and in Ridge Crest. They're saying they want to flush the toilet in Shadow Creek, that they don't have water to wash their hands. And in Ridge Crest, they're complaining that there is no water during certain periods of time. So is there an issue with the water there?
We had a leak there today.
We had a leak today.
That's been it.
That's been it.
What about a couple of weeks ago in Ridge Crest?
None. Nah, if they'll call us, we'll check their water pressure. It could be on their side. It could be their PRV going out. We haven't had any complaints out there.
Okay. Also regarding the George Roy Apartments, I'm getting, getting calls regarding the construction. First thing though I want to discuss is whoever the mayor will be, what can we put in place, let me ask you a time, so that the council is informed when there are developments, commercial or residential. When we see things going up, we have to ask, what is this? What is that? So we need to be communicating that information before the process starts. So what can we put in place in order that the council is informed? That we don't just see things going up and that's when we realize, wow, we have something being built in town. What is that? And people ask us and we don't know. So what possibly can we do to remedy that?
Well, there, there is a permitting process in place. So it's, it's as much an administrative matter as anything. And from a legal standpoint, I mean the city council can, can set whatever directives they want to try to enforce that. That's a general answer to the question. But the permitting process is, is the public notice.
I understand that, but I would like it, if that's not too much to ask, that the council would be notified. We have this project. I had asked several, what, a year or so ago, could we be notified when there are projects, there are projects going on? Ongoing projects or possibly projects that are in the works? Could we be notified? And so that we don't get things on the tail end and then people are asking us, what's going on? Why is this being done? Do you have this? Do you have this in place? So I just have a few questions now, but that is just permitting. How do you feel council? Would you like to know just formally when a project is about to happen? Could somebody tell us please without us having to ask, well, some citizen, ask us. So what is this? So is that something y'all would like to know? Before the process?
We have a project status report for the planning commission every month that goes over what's going on.
Okay. What, could you forward that to us? Could you email us?
I can get it in PowerPoint, yeah.
Yeah, would you do that? Yeah, we'd like to stay informed going forward. Whoever the mayor is, we'd like to know when it's the project ongoing, about to happen. Okay. Questions about the George Roy Parkway. People are blowing up my phone. So, did we, was there a vote in the planning commission? They're saying we're looking for the minutes on that project and they're not posted. So do you have minutes, Kevin?
There was no approval for those apartments.
Why not?
It's not required.
Why wasn't it required? How old are the preliminary flats and the?
No preliminary flats for that project.
Well, these explains that we'll understand. So.
Preliminary flats needed when there's, land is being subdivided or merged and that was not the case in this project. That's all one piece of property. That's the only time you would need a preliminary flat.
So that's nothing like we had in the past where we had situations with Arizona missions where something had been dormant for 15 to 20 years and then all of a sudden?
That property had been zoned for resident, multifamily residential for probably 20 years.
So why wouldn't they have to come back and get updated approval?
It's not in our ordinance.
So that's something we need to look at going forward now, ordinance. Because why would it be a good idea to start something and you have information from 15 to 20 years ago?
Y'all want to change the process, that's up to you.
Okay. So question for you, Bill. Did we do a traffic study?
Yes. There was a traffic, there was actually a traffic study and a consultant.
Do you have copies of that you can email? Would you?
I don't know that I can.
Why couldn't you?
That would be an attorney question because we're not the owners of the traffic study.
Who did the study then?
The developer had it done at our request. And it's, there could be, there could be claims of intellectual property since it's professional engineering documents. I can ask approval and I don't know, can, can the owner give me approval?
If it's the owner's work product, yes. Was it presented at any time to the planning commission?
No, no.
So how was it that we, why did the traffic study get done?
Because any development over a certain size requires a traffic study, but I don't, can I share it to the public? It's not our, we don't own it. It's not our, we don't own it.
Right.
From what I read in engineering law, it's a very fine line on that, on sharing.
It's, it's not the city's property, that's correct. But it's done as part of the permitting process and perhaps we could hook it that way.
Yeah.
But the, the best way would be to ask for the ownership from the owner to do it.
I'll ask the owner if he's willing to share that. But yeah, we, he provided a copy of it, then I sent it to one of our consultants for concurrence.
So did the fire marshals sign up on that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And did you also, um, have the police department to review it for the traffic safety congestion and patrol impacts?
Police are not in the, they're not in our approval workflows, but the traffic study handled all congestion issues.
Okay. So like I said, we have had these issues in the past to where I, it was my understanding that the regulations were after 12 months that you had to, that situation expired.
That's an impugn, that's an impugn.
Oh. But you will give us the, get the information as to the traffic study and any other additional information, like I said, going forward, the council would like to be informed.
I can email you my PowerPoint that I do every month. And planning commission.
Well, specifically on this, because like I said, I keep getting questions about, uh, everything on this. What approvals took place? And they look for the minutes in the planning commission minutes and they're all gone, like you said. So that's not required, correct? Yes or no?
Whether the planning commission minutes are required?
Well, the planning commission doesn't sign up on that either. That's just not required, huh? It's just wild.
I'm saying there's an agenda for each meeting that includes what I didn't know the owner agenda. That, that would be the best source, I would say.
Well, like I said, just trying to get complete information so I can try to explain that to the public when they call me regarding this situation, because that is a two-lane road. And they say that traffic is, uh, very congested in the evenings when they're coming from work and then, you know, when they're going to work.
That was addressed in the traffic study.
Yeah, so the way it works, when we get a set of civil plans, we put it in a workflow. That workflow includes engineering, utilities, fire marshal, um, it even goes through, uh, public works, building. And each person has to respond, positively respond to that workflow for the workflow to terminate, either approve or reject. So they can put comments in with it. So it stays in active workflow until everybody responds. So, so when that was put in the process, I don't know how many times, it probably went through two, three, four times, went through the process until everybody approves. So everybody has an opportunity to add their comments, add their suggestions on what they want in that development and that went through that process, went through the exact same process. And on the traffic study, the traffic study, um, did indicate and require signaling at 22 and George Roy. It did not require any type of lane, turn lanes or deceleration lanes, but the developer is putting those in at our request. So they're adding turn lanes, deceleration lanes, turn signal, and they're putting in about, uh, probably about 3,000 foot of super force lane to, to handle that development. So all the boxes are checked on every civil development. Anything that comes in, everybody has an opportunity.
Commercial and residential.
Commercial and residential. Anything that comes in, it goes through all those departments. And there's a paper, there's, it's kept electronically and there's a paper trail of that as well.
So all we have to do is give it to you and you give us that information.
If it belongs to the city, I can give them to you. If it doesn't belong to us, I can ask the owner if he's willing to share it. If they're not willing to share it, that's, that's, that's their prerogative. It's their property.
Well, see what you.
They paid for it.
What you can give with the owner and give back with us. Thank you, that's all I have.
You're welcome.
I just have a couple of questions. Resolution 202550 deals with the school board and the county commission. And I'm just curious, there's a date on here of July the 22nd of 2013? We haven't had this updated since then? Council of the commission? And I, I went back and tried to find if we had to do this before and I couldn't find, I couldn't find. Have we had this on with it before?
Every year.
So this is the 2062,000 that we're going to get to help offset some of the police expense or the visitor.
That's going to fund the superintendent, the deputy manager.
Yeah, okay. And I have one question. I, I feel like we've gone around this several times. Your retirement health insurance, mayor, are you comfortable not having a count on this insurance? I, I just wonder how expensive, is it going to get for this?
So we've, we've had, again, we've raised, this seems like the best, the best fit for both the city and retirees, for both the retirees that have worked here. So I feel like it's currently the best option for, for both of them as well.
I, I agree. I was just a little concerned about the cost of insurance going up yearly about 10%. Did we, do we need to consider any kind of count for the future?
This, this was a proposal, this, this, the council's choice. It's something we could, we could live with a brother's.
That's all I have tonight, thank you.
All right, give it.
I don't have it. Yes, sir. Thank you. Um, one of the customer, one of our citizen, um, asked, is there any way that we can promote or put, um, some information on our bulletin board out in front of the city hall promoting kids cancer? There was a young lady that came in and she talked to us about her daughter's situation. So she would like to know what can she do, if there's anything she can do? And also, um, what would she need to do as far as getting the city more involved in doing like, uh, pink ribbons throughout the city? If she had the, um, what she can do and how she can do it, she would be the one to sponsor getting the, uh, all the, all the city. So I guess the question is how, what does she need to do?
I don't, to promote that. I think that we probably got the same email. I read an email about that, um, that I read this morning, so it was a little late to get a resolution on the agenda. But, uh, I think she said that September is childhood awareness for cancer. So if, if we want to promote something, I, I don't know exactly how, you know, what role we need to take in ribbons and all that, so. I don't know exactly how to move forward with that. The, uh, Markey James, he could do something on our city board possibly, and then we could do something on our social media to promote that for, for the, for the, for the, for the ribbon, I don't know. But, uh, if she wants to place the ribbons up here on the counter in front of the office, that's fine. You know? Work with her if you get back in touch with her and.
Yes, sir.
See how we can help accommodate on the, the interest of, um, hey, and also chief, did you mention anything about national night out? I may have missed.
No, you didn't miss, I did. Uh, yeah, October 7th, the fire chief, uh, reminded me about that too. Uh, October 7th will be our national night out, our fifth one. And we've got, uh, another demonstration. The demonstration last year really went well. We had, uh, used one of our dogs and then the fire department did the cutting part of the vehicle, like the extrication stuff. I think people really enjoyed that. So we've got some ideas about how to make that even better. I think our attendance last year, Main Street people, I think it was the best we had had. Um, and moving it to Main Street was a good move for us. So yeah, but it's coming up October 7th at, uh, starting at 6:30, national night out. And we've got, uh, quite a few, quite a few, um, guests that'll be there. And like I said, I think the demo this year, we're going to try to step it up a notch. I'm having to call some of the guys down planning it because there's some things we can't do, but I think it'll be really good. Thank you for asking.
Yes, sir. That's all I have.
Sure.
Announcements from Main Street?
Yeah.
And say home here, but I'll pass, we've got a few minutes.
All right, chief, you don't touch this microphone.
I don't take you sure.
All right. Um, to be brief here, uh, this weekend, uh, we're going to have a couple of things. Uh, we're going to have Cars and Coffee on Saturday, which will be a great event. And more cars are coming, we're expecting 50-plus cars. So if you've got a nice one, bring it. If not, then just come have some coffee and look at those that have been, uh, brought there by the, uh, different, um, uh, people that are bringing them in. And I've gotten some questions regarding it. Hey, you know, in what condition does my vehicle need to be in? And look, as long as it doesn't have to be towed, bring it and we'll, we'll either smile or laugh, either way. So that's going to be Saturday. And then Sunday, of course, we're going to have our first, uh, Calera pet-centric type of event, which is going to be a, a pavilion potty under the pavilion. Uh, bring your pup. There's going to be quite a few vendors there and, uh, we're excited to have that. That's going to be Sunday. And I apologize for not knowing the hours, but my backup is not here. So if you want to look online, you'll be able to see, um, at what times both of those events are going to be taking place. And lastly, with the, uh, chief mentioned, we're looking forward to, um, having that October event, that's going to be on the 7th, if I'm not mistaken. And, uh, last year's went very well, was very well received by, uh, both Main Street, Police Department and the public. So we're excited to, uh, have everybody downtown and, uh, continue our progress. And, any questions?
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
I think pretty much everybody knows who Stephen is, but for those of you who don't, this is Stephen Wharton. Stephen has been with the city for 25 years and for some reason decided he wanted to retire. So, um, with, with 25 years of service, 22 at the police department and then the last three with me in IT, um, the end of this month will be Stephen's retirement day. So he claims he may come back and work with me part-time some, but we'll see. Hopefully I can coax him into doing that. But I do want to present this to you. This is a plaque from Governor Ivey, uh, presenting you for your 25 years of service in the city of Calera, and we wanted to say how much we appreciate you.
I appreciate it. That's nice. Thank you.
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
That's a good watch.
Yeah, I know.
Are we in a no burns zone right now?
Yeah, we're still in a ATM imposed no burn until November 1st. And since you brought that up, we've had, actually, we might still have some crew out working right now, but it's, it's very dry as you all know, so pay careful attention to that. And, um, not a, not a time to skirt the rules right now because it could cause a big mess on November 1st.
Put a notice on, uh, send a notice out.
Yeah, we can do that.
I don't see rain because I've been through a few days.
No, it's, last time I checked, I didn't see anything for two weeks. It was dry.
It was very, very, very dry.
Mayor, also, just around a second. Will you also remind our citizen that, uh, about the election, um, and the locations so everybody be, um, familiar with the time and date?
For the runoff?
Yes, sir.
The mayor's runoff election will take place next to you today, 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM at the George Roy.
Royville.
Library, uh, Royville Library, I'm sorry.
Let's pray Father God will come before you and just thank you for the grace and the mercy and the power of the family that you're there for. We call upon you and we ask that you be with us, um, in our thoughts and actions as we move through this meeting. And, uh, once again, thank you for what you do for us in this night.
Amen. I put the nation to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, the first item I have on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Motion in a second to approve the agenda that I'm in favor of today. I need a motion to approve the minutes. Now, do you have a motion to approve the minutes? Is there a motion?
A second.
Motion in a second, all in favor, say aye. Resolution 2025-48 was adopted in the FY '25, '26 budget. We've had tremendous amount of discussion over it. This time, we're going to go to a discussion. The council thought we'll adopt that as outlined, Kelly, hit that for you.
I make a motion to approve Resolution 2025-48.
A second.
Got a motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Propose likewise. We have Kelly home here with some goods adjustments. Any discussion on those goods adjustments? No discussion, I need to, what about the, this team?
I'll make a motion to adopt.
A second.
Got a motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
James has recognized Stephen. Stephen has been a great employee for the city and been in a couple of different departments, taking for your service here. We continue to lean on you, we need some part-time help. Congratulations.
Thank you.
For 25 plus years, you've done a good job.
Appreciate it.
All right, uh, resolution 2025-49, it says CSX land
License.
Agreement to use these, but the, uh, beside our Calera Ford yard area, there's a CSX. Has that ready for us to execute? We need to put a payment with that for the annual 12-year.
Yeah, so we've, uh, we've already, we've, we've got, we're going to be able to wire it or do it all live, or something like that.
We've already made it. We've made the payment.
Thank you.
We made the payment, so that's good.
I'm expecting CSX to turn their signature around quickly.
Okay, this, this resolution is going to allow me to sign that agreement. The council, I mean, discussion. We have a time, we need to make a motion.
I'll make a motion. A second.
Got a motion in a second, all in favor, say aye. Resolution 2025-50 is the Chevy County Board of Education, Chevy County Commission, the city of Calera agreement. It's a similar way that we've had for quite a few years. And we have been able to really, really put the money to good use and parlay it with our budget to have our schools covered and you heard the chief talk about it, about the extent of covering. Over the last five years, I know chief, we've been able to talk about it and really enhance the, the service that, that our officers, you know, give to the protection of our children. Thank you for what you do and thank you for that. I think that the additional money will be well spent. I know you can use every bit of it.
Absolutely.
Any discussion on that? I know you. Do you need a motion to adopt?
I'll make a motion for that, a second.
Got a motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next is ordinance 2025-06, retiree health insurance. This is, this is an important aspect of what we do operate in the city. And in students of our dollars, we, we want to take care of the employees who have worked here and given their lives in a lot of situations, they've given a lifetime of employment. I saw one tonight. Retired for 25 years. We've seen quite a few employees that, that need this help and this is something that we've grown out there that may obviously help. It's beneficial to the city to continue to take care of our employees. Any discussion on that, resolution for retiree health insurance?
I have a question. So since there is no cap on it, Kelly, how does it go, how does it, explain what happens when the insurance increases?
The amount that's paid, just like the regular insurance, when the amount increases, the amount, both the employee and the employer pay. So a 75-25 split, when the price increases, it'll continue to be a 75-25 split. It'll go up, our increase this year is four and a half percent. So the, the regular employee's insurance, their part they're paying, and the employer's part will go up four and a half. And on the retiree's insurance, what the retiree pays and what the city pays goes up four and a half percent.
So explain what happens when there's a cap on it, with the 75-25?
When there's a cap, there's a limit on how much that the city pays. And so it puts more on the employee. So when there's a cap, like our cap was 750, is that right, Kelly? So it was 750. So even though there's, you know, years ago was an 80-20 split, the cap was so low, it didn't cap it. So as, as the, anytime there's a price increase and there's a cap and the cap doesn't increase, the employee's paying more. So that's the problem with a cap. If a cap stays and the prices go up, that's more the employee pays and less than the city pays. And our, and the 75-25 split is in line with what Pelham and Alabaster are also. They're, actually Pelham still pays a little bit more on retiree's insurance than us, but Alabaster, we're equal to Alabaster in what Alabaster's paying.
Any other discussion? Do you need a motion? If you unanimous consent, if you want to approve, roll this forward.
I'll make a motion for unanimous consent.
We got a motion, can you, permission? Got a motion in a second, if you unanimous consent, all in, all in the roll call, honest?
Yes.
Yeah?
Yes.
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 Yes. Roll call, if you unanimous consent, now do you need a motion to adopt?
I'll make a motion to adopt, a second.
Got a motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I think that's a big statement. And thank you, council, for moving forward in that direction, as it should be. I'd like to gesture to them, the retired employees, whoever is going to be looking to retire, so you kind of got a little vision ahead of you, once you got kind of what it means to you. Resolution 2025-51, it's a amicus resolution, you heard Ben talk about it, us going in and with some other cities and I think a lot of Chevy County from what I'm hearing, we're going to be on board with trying to steer the decisions in the Supreme Court. In a different light, correct?
If anybody can do it, Chevy County City's going to have it.
That's right. We can't do it, bad together, we're good, you know? Anyway, you got this resolution before you heard Ben talk about it. Do you need a motion with?
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
Got a motion?
A second.
A second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Resolution 2025-52 is a unique situation with vacation buyback. We've got it before you. You know, this pretends to, some of the bills and employees that were running PNO and there's some opportunities to help him stretch out allow the employees to, maybe get another week or two to work in this, this annual, you know, in an annual period of time, so. Kind of an unusual situation. We're beginning, we're getting a couple, we've had a new individual, base of water.
Yeah, Gilbert.
Exactly.
Yeah, he started the next day.
We need, we need some of those employees, so. This resolution will help us in this time. Any discussion on that? Now, do you need a motion to adopt?
I'll move on a motion.
Got a motion on, a motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That's all I have on that agenda, that's all.